Okay, the meeting will come to order. Let it be noted that all members of the committee are present. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item D, previous matters for consideration. Discussion regarding the modification of City of West Dallas policy and procedure number three zero four, rules of procedure in RMC Chapter Three, Rules for the Council relating to scheduling, recording, and operation of the meetings.
Is this where I get to talk?
If you desire.
I didn't know if this, I didn't know if there was something I was waiting, it's like, what goes next?
All in person, Probst.
Thank you, President Lysick. I am bringing this forward as a discussion item. I've been asked by a number of constituents in my district, they are very frustrated with the way in which we do business at City Hall, holding simultaneous meetings, making them choose between which ones they want to go. And as a result, the fact that we do not record our regular meetings with the exception of License and Health, and our full committee meetings, I mean our full meetings in the council chambers, they can't even go back and see what occurred when they weren't able to be here. So, this is, I sat down and I had talked with Rebecca a while ago, and this was the way in which I could bring this forward so that we could have this discussion.
Mr. Chair?
All in me.
So it sounds like two, two issues, the simultaneous holding of meetings and then the recording of meetings?
Correct.
I think the recordings, can we talk about that one first?
Whatever you want.
I don't have a problem with it. That's all I wanted to say.
Makes sense to me. This meeting is being recorded. I talked to our city administrator Rebecca Grill regarding doing another room with cameras so that if we stay simultaneous meetings, we can still record. If not, at least we have the figures on what it's going to cost to do it. Rebecca, would you?
Sure.
Fill us in on what that is?
The quote we received was to have the mayor's conference room, the development conference room, and the art gallery put cameras in there, and also to upgrade this room to have wireless microphones, because if we're going to be recording on a regular basis, it would be easier to have the microphones available than have to put these out every time. So, the amount that we received the quote for was forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-five. We were supposed to get an updated one today, because they neglected to include the audio.
Oh, that's nice.
So we could just have the video. Sound movie. But, so, we're hoping to have that shortly. The communications budget that was approved by the council for two thousand seventeen did include twenty thousand dollars for some upgrading to committee rooms and putting in new cameras and audio recording. So there's already twenty thousand dollars available for that, but there is additional capital funding available in the communications budget that could be utilized if the council so desired to move forward on that.
My concern is having rooms that do not have cameras and audio, so that when we have the need to go into executive session, we can adjourn to those rooms and not have to worry about somebody forgetting and leaving a switch on with the cameras or the audio. Are we going to have rooms to do that?
We certainly wouldn't have to put them in all of the conference rooms.
That's what I'm.
Put them in the mayor's conference room or the development conference room. We just wanted to get the information for you, so going forward, hopefully we'll have the total information for that decision to be made, if you like to do that. One thing that I should note is that we can only televise one meeting. We could, we could record up to four conference rooms at the same time, but we can only televise one at the same time.
But you could, when we re-air the meetings or at the end of the council meeting, run the other committee meetings if they're done simultaneously, correct?
That's correct. They're also available on YouTube, so we would put the links on our website for people.
Okay, so people could go see them. All right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question Rebecca. Do we have a count or statistics of how many, we are close to sixty thousand population in West Dallas. How many people really watch our council meetings? You know, is there any numbers that we can base on that?
I'm not sure if we.
We don't have Nelson ratings.
No, no Nelson ratings.
We don't have that, right?
I would have to check to know for sure, but I don't believe we do.
Because one time I heard it was less than five percent, not even five percent during the council meeting, the people in West Dallas watch our council meetings, you know. I mean, just a question in general, I'm not opposing the questions if it comes down to have cameras in our rooms, you know, but just the fact that is, we expens money for something that I'm really concerned about, how many people really watch our committee meetings, you know? Say, say we go to a, to a room to have our, during recess meeting or any other nights we have a regular committee meetings, you know, that's what, you know, that's good, I mean, if it comes down to have it done, well, should be, but the fact that is, how many people really watching that? One time I heard even the council meeting is not really observed from many citizens within our community, really.
Well, I think one thing Alderman would tell you, you have to keep in mind is, that even though the live usage may not be, you know, as, as high as you might like, people do have the opportunity to go in at their leisure and, and once convenient and go ahead and view these.
I agree, totally, I agree.
So I'm sure that, you know, more and more people are becoming aware of that and utilizing it. So I think there are more and more people that are watching the meetings. Alderman Barzak?
Just to sort of answer that, we used to have a program, if you remember, called Ask Your Alderman?
Yes, right.
And there were times we sat there and nobody called.
Nobody called, right? You're rapping. Nobody.
Been there for a very long evening.
Really? Yeah, yeah. It was, they actually were a lot of fun and very informative, but people, again, they were replayed and people saw the content of it. You know, it depends on what your subject matter was at the time, but they were, they were pretty good. Over, over the years, I've, I've really never seen, I can't, maybe Conkle that, that came to meetings, I've never seen a constituent ever come to multiple meetings, I, you know, the same, I've just never seen it.
I've had them over the years.
Yeah, I, over the year, I think, I think I said it, Conkle, you know, Bob Brown talks, walks right out.
Yeah, we've had them over the years, regular, regular ten days.
Yeah, some, the question I had is the laptop, can't we just set up the laptop and hit record and have the meeting recorded and, and then download it and, that simple?
Audio only?
Yeah, both. You, you can, there's cameras on those things.
Yeah.
They make them with cameras today. So, you just turn it around, you hit record and, and you got the laptop sitting here and the meeting's right there and it's recorded. Spend eighty thousand dollars?
No, forty thousand, correct?
Forty, I don't care if it's twenty.
Forty-two thousand.
I think it's ridiculous. The, I think just, you don't have it. Also, anytime with any committee meeting that I've ever attended or not attended, if there was an item that was on that agenda, because a lot of the things like Public Works, you know, purchase of this, a purchase of that, a purchase of this, approve the spending of that, it's like, really? People want to come and see that? I think that if, if there's an item, and I've done it in the past and I've requested it, I said, hey, item number eighteen, that particular bartender, I want to be in, or, or perhaps it was a building, you know, with a revocation, I want to be in that meeting, would you hold that item for me? Absolutely. You hold it, you have your meeting, and at the end you bring it back up. I just, me personally, I don't see the need to spend this money. I think a laptop and just record it would be ample. Why we have to have a big production with cameras and?
We have it here.
I know we do, we.
We have it in this room, we have it in the council chamber.
We did, and here's the reason we did it. With License and Health, we did it as a backup for when people would come into the License and Health, Health meeting, and they would say, well, I'm going to have this particular type of business, and we're going to have this type of cuisine, and we're going to have this type, and then all of a sudden it's completely different, and we could go back and replay that and say, this is what she said. Because they'll go, I never said that, and you had no proof. You know, all you had was, you know, some brief minutes. But, you know, if you have a laptop recording, you know, it's still all there, the audio's there, the video's there.
I do have some information regarding, we don't have any metrics on the live viewing, but our YouTube viewing, we can get metrics on that. So the last meeting had forty-eight views, so I don't know that people watched the whole meeting, but there were forty-eight people that watched some part of those.
Ten, ten sponsors and.
At some, at some, at some point, Vince, I remember that we, we did a, like a study and it, it was way less than one percent. I mean, it was like point zero two five percent watched the meetings live. Now, again, review them after, you know, that can be countless, because I've had people with License and Health come up, and, you know, there, there's many people that love watching the License and Health meetings. And I, you know, I heard comments all the time, yeah, I saw that meeting and, you know, might not have been live, but, you know, to be replayed, I do agree with that. But the same thing with the laptop, once it's downloaded, I believe that could be replayed. I don't think that, I think the technology is there today for us to have a.
I guess I, I would defer to John Matty and his staff as to whether that would be present a reasonable show for, for someone who wants to view it in, on YouTube or something.
It would, it wouldn't capture everyone's faces or the, obviously.
That might be a good thing.
Yeah. If you had that laptop far enough back.
We can also do an audio recording that we can make available too, that's another option that would be.
Well, we had discussed that as well. I, I was leaning more towards going the route of having another room with cameras, so that if we wanted to conduct two meetings at the same time, we could do that and expedite our council meetings, expedite the committee meetings, because as Alderman Barzak indicated, the vast majority of the items that we act upon at recess, we all, ninety percent of us, agree on all of them. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a ten percent of the issues that, and probably less than that. Right, probably two or three percent that, that we have some disagreement over and, and those rightfully so, you know, should be held at a different time or, or, you know, a separate meeting or, or at least.
I think we usually do.
Correct, usually, all in person.
One, I want to be real clear, when I suggested that, that we were looking to have the meetings recorded, it was not so that they could be livestreamed necessarily, that, that wasn't the point. It was recorded so that there is video evidence of what occurred. That's the, the fact that there should be. We should not be relying on one another's recollection. We should be able to go back to an actual videotape or an audiotape to be able to say, this is what transpired, and it's not about somebody's very, very flawed recollection, because again, you got personal bias that gets a role in there, so, as far as that goes. In terms of, and I had heard we were going to start with the video cameras, that's why I didn't want to go into the simultaneous meetings, but then you did, so I don't know, are we done, I mean, I, I don't know where to go and I, I want to talk about the simultaneous meetings, but I don't want to stop the conversation on the other.
I'd like to add a couple things. First of all, I always like to ask, what do our neighbors do? What does Tulsa do? What does Milwaukee do? Do they record everything? Is everything available?
Milwaukee records everything.
I, I think especially in this day and age, you know, we make it as simple as possible for people to, if not participate, at least see what's been going on. I'd be, I, I think spending, I, I'd say we just do one other room, if for no other reason, sometimes on election day, this room isn't available.
Right.
You know, if, if we have the meetings right around, like sometime, we, you know, License and Health can't meet in here, you know, if for no other reason, just for that, I, I think it makes a hundred percent sense, you know. The question is, does it satisfy the constituents that approached Alderman Probst about their, would that, would they be happy with that? No one's, no one's come forward to me about it. I haven't done a phone call, an email, or face to face, no one said to me, other than we had somebody speaking or public here at, you know, during open, open mic.
Didn't you, did you just get another email the other day? Did we all get that email? Or did it just go to me?
No.
From Mr. Holmes?
No.
Okay, he was the gentleman, I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay. That's okay, but, you know, I mean, we live in the information age, you know, I, I think that everything should be, at least audio, for sure video, and then as far as the quality of it, I mean, you ever watch a school board meeting?
Kid.
Because it's painful if it's not done well. And it's, yes.
It is.
Yes. So, we should have a certain level of professionalism to it. I don't think a laptop, you know, computer at the end of the shooting faces and getting voices overlapping and all that, I don't think that, that would do, do the job. I'm not in favor of spending money willy-nilly, but if we have most of it budgeted already anyways, now, I guess my question is, did staff do these? And are you talking, was this a contractor we're talking about on a bid? I thought, I thought staff had done it, this room originally.
I thought so too, but I'm not sure.
The quote we have goes to Gene Veyado, so I think, from Key Code Media, so I think these people were.
He was purchasing.
The ones that provided this, provided the equipment previously. One of the reasons we had the twenty thousand dollars allocated in the budget was so that the art gallery could be fitted with cameras and audio when we do training for employees and things like that.
So you want to do it anyway.
Correct.
Right, yeah, so, and, and so that, that's installed or that's just the hardware? Was that, that's an installed price? Those numbers you have there is all in and all done?
Well, these, yeah, there's a project engineer listed and installation is listed.
Okay, okay, so that's installed, yeah. So, I'm, I'm sure we have the bandwidth, you know, YouTube, I mean, there's, I, I think it makes sense to record. If for no other reason, we probably have people who want to know what's going on that might have accessibility issues, you know, it's February, they don't want to leave the house, you know, so.
Just to finish on it, I always felt, and I said it before, that, that besides License and Health, that finance should be, should be televised, because that's one of the best, and the other one would have been CDA, Community Development Authority, because a lot happens in that particular committee with the future of the city, and I always felt that that one should have been also televised, not, you know, not only recorded, but those should be.
And are we talking about those other commissions also and authorities, or just?
We haven't talked about that yet, this just addresses.
We're talking about the council committees here, I understand that. But I, I think he makes a good point, if, if the room's wired for it and, you know, I don't know how much extra staff time it would, might take, though, that's the question, because there's usually somebody on the payroll running the calendar, or running the.
We have Dave Harris.
Right now.
Yeah.
So there will be.
However, doing that, it should, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I would think that it should eliminate someone taking minutes at the meeting, because.
Was that legitimate minutes?
Well, you would, you'd have to transcribe the minutes the next day, but you wouldn't have to pay overtime for the meeting.
Oh.
You know, you could have someone doing it during the day at their regular hours instead of. And, and, you know, watching the meeting and putting the minutes rather than paying overtime.
Are these, are, are staff usually an overtimeer here, or they do some sort of time trades? You do, is it typically a time trade?
It depends on the week in their staffing schedule. It had typically been overtime.
At least it gives you an option.
Yeah. Not that they're just sitting on the desk all day, wait for something to do.
You know, as long as the money's budgeted, I, I guess the chair would entertain a motion that we don't proceed.
A little further, a little further. I'm, I'm, that, so we're just talking then, the, the other room, the other room and the, the.
The art gallery.
The art gallery.
Just the art gallery.
Come on, give it its corrects.
And this other room.
Just the art gallery.
Not this and the art gallery.
Mayor's.
Not the other room? I thought you were doing the mayor's conference room.
Right.
Not development, though.
So now, well.
Right, because I think that one, that's where the other meetings are held.
Well, they'll hold the other meetings downstairs.
Oh, go to the art gallery and hold them there?
But there's other stuff going on sometimes that's.
No, not usually, not on council night.
Would the chair do that other room?
If, if that happens, we could have mics available and a table set up in the council chamber to hold those committee meetings, so we do technically still three.
I, I can tell you from experience, because we've had some safety and development committee meetings in our, it's not good.
It's tough, yeah, audio.
Because there's too much noise, too many people stick around and there's talking and very distracting.
In which case I would, I would have to agree, maybe the council and the art, or the.
You know, we can, we can do the mayor's conference room, and my concern is, we need a room for executive sessions.
Well, they just turn it off.
What about development's conference room?
I, I don't like that, just turning them off, because it's too easy for someone to mistakenly hit the switch and turn them on.
What about the development conference room?
You could do that.
Yeah, shoot upstairs.
I have case for that.
Maybe finance conference room?
Oh, yeah, our, our alderman room.
Yeah, you could go in there.
Yeah, finance conference room might be a good option, because that's a bigger room.
Yeah, development may want to.
If they're still going to do the simultaneous meetings.
I guess I would defer to Rebecca and the mayor regarding the mayor's conference room, if he has any problem with having cameras in there and, and audio, probably not, but I think I'd.
I'd check with him.
I want to check with the mayor just to make sure.
Although I, I would believe that we are the keepers and.
We are, but out of deference to the mayor, I mean, it is his conference room, so.
So basically, those rooms would be videotaped and recorded, both?
Yes.
Yes, so we're talking all committee meetings, advisory.
Yes.
We're talking about everything. A and F, S and D, advisory, public works, everything.
Might already talked to John Steeple about having all these safety and development meetings in the future, televised.
And then all available online for you to view at your convenience. If you want to go back and look at a meeting or save one, that, that particular item that you were concerned about, you have the archive. In fact, we should probably keep them, that.
Yeah, sorted.
Yeah.
Rebecca?
I just, one is, we have some feedback about Wawa Tulsa, they do record and televise their council meetings, they rebroadcast them, and they also rebroadcast their council committee meetings. When I worked for the city of Milwaukee, they record all of the committee meetings. Also, in their legislature program, there's actually a recording program, and I think my group can check on this, where you can actually put a point where the exact item is discussed.
Oh, okay. Tulsa has that too.
So people don't have to watch.
Oh, the whole meeting.
Whole meeting, but they didn't.
Oh, want to watch the whole meeting?
Oh, that's a nice little.
We have not, we, they were supposed to get it back on Friday, but they didn't get us the information, so.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of, that'd be nice.
Tulsa has it too.
So what motion are you looking for, Tom?
Um, one to, um.
It says discussion, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, I, I, I know that, but we, if we're going to have staff proceed with anything, we have to have a motion to authorize them to do that. So I guess the chair would entertain a motion to ask staff to proceed to.
To get what, final costs?
Well, she's already got most of the costs.
If, if we're just going to do the one room and the other room with the mayor's blessing?
Right.
If, if there's an issue, then the mayor would get back to us and let us know?
Yep, correct.
So.
Otherwise proceed with.
My motion would be to proceed with installation of cameras in the mayor's conference room and the art gallery at this particular time.
And audio equipment.
And audio.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, then the next part was the simultaneous meetings.
And I did receive an email, and I thought it had gone to the entire council, so I received an email from Mr. Holmes, who was the owner of Avant Garde. He came to speak at our council meeting, I believe, the meeting before last. Although these meetings are stretched out, so I can't remember if it was July or August, but he was, he was here this summer.
Yeah.
To speak about his, his issue with the, with the simultaneous holding of meetings. The fact that he is, on more than one occasion, he may have something that is of interest to him for, from License and Health, and he'd like to be in that meeting for obvious reasons, given what he does for a living, but at the same time, because he's also a homeowner and a business owner in the bid, he may have something in safety and development that he needs to be a part of, all right? And he has had on more than one occasion, the, the fact that he has to pick and choose between the meetings that he's go, that he has gone to. Now, that's his, that's his position as a taxpayer, he wants these, he does not believe, and now this is where I'm going to join him, he does not believe that we are effective in our jobs when we are not present for the conversation and the, and, and the discussion item. So, while I very much agree with what you have said before, and I've never had anybody not hold an, a specific item if I've wanted to be present for that, the problem is, we're not there to hear the discussion from the, the department head who might be going through an issue, so when I'm not on administration and finance anymore, and, and I trust Marty, but I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to rely on his judgment over what just happened, even though he's the second district representative on that committee at that time, I was also duly elected as much as he was, and I have the same vote power for administration and finance, and when I'm not here to hear that conversation, I don't know that I have a question until I hear the ins and outs. We've been through this, where all of a sudden that question brings up, hey, what about this? Now, this did happen to us earlier this year, there was an administration and finance issue, there was an item that passed by, I wasn't in here to hear the discussion, I had absolutely no idea what a big thing it was going to be. I asked for a motion to reconsider, because I had had an opportunity to do some research. I would have changed my vote. There were a hundred and seven action items on that agenda. That was an awful lot for us to go through when we get the agendas on a Thursday by five o'clock or Friday around noon, for me to be able to get through all a hundred and seven items, so when I'm not present in a meeting, and then I am asked to vote on such, without having had the benefit of the discussion, I am not the best representative, and I don't believe that that's what I was elected for. I should have, I, I had the responsibility. Not only do I have the right as a representative, but I have the responsibility as a representative to be there to hear the conversation, and so that I can make the appropriate votes for the people that have elected me.
And, and again, I think with the recording of the meetings, that'll take care of that, because you'll hear the entire discussion.
Afterwards, I'm going to have to come back and vote on something that I wasn't present for.
You, you still could have the opportunity to go back for reconsideration and bring it back.
I, I tried that, and I was denied an opportunity to even have the discussion. I tried to have a motion for reconsideration, and it was resoundingly defeated. I wanted to have that discussion. This body stopped me from being able to have that motion for reconsideration. Now, all I wanted to do was have that conversation, given the fact that I had additional information, I shared that information. I was told, in no uncertain terms, that it was sort of shady, it, the way, it was suspect at how that all came out. It's like, no, it wasn't, it was duly put together. Now, the fault were that the people in the department didn't actively communicate with their department head, and Mike Lewis was in the dark, but his people put that together. His people put that together because they realized that somebody who was supposed to carry forward some information to this body didn't do their job. That information didn't come forward, and those guys were left hanging. And they realized, we made a vote without having that information from them. So they sought me out, twelve members of one of our departments sought me out, and they provided me with this information, asking me to please bring this forward, and I did. And then I asked to have the conversation, so that I could talk about what I had discovered, and you guys wouldn't allow that conversation. So I was trying to represent, and I was not allowed.
Aye.
So that was very frustrating. So I disagree with what you've just said.
I, I just don't recall, I don't recall.
You may not have been here, in all honesty, I don't know if you were present.
Okay, it could be that I wasn't here, because I would let anybody bring something back for reconsideration at any time if they had a disagreement, and I would sure hope that every council member would allow any other council member to bring something back for reconsideration.
That did not happen.
I, I mean, again, I don't recall the circumstances and.
I, I will, let me say this, I agree with Alderman Probst to a certain extent. We, I think, have gotten into a bad habit of acting on important issues during the council meeting at recess. And the meeting at recess is not supposed to be for acting upon real, possibly controversial possibly controversial policy issues. Um, there should be separate committee meetings um held on a regular basis to handle those types of issues. The recess meetings of the council are supposed to be, uh uh originally, we did this for two reasons. Number one, to speed up development issues, special use permits, for instance, if a business came in and applied for a special use permit. We couldn't act on it, we didn't act on it that evening, we had to wait until the next safety and development meeting was to approve it, and then it would go back to the council for approval at the following council meeting, which could be over a month later, because if you miss the cycle of meetings. So it was decided for non-controversial special use and those types of things, we would act on them at recess. If it's controversial, the neighbors are down there, they're they're, they have questions on it, the older persons of the district have questions on it. It's held and it's held in a normal fashion, uh and you have a neighborhood meeting or whatever. Same thing with public works, uh projects, you act on them at recess, if it's if it's controversial in the neighborhood and they want a neighborhood meeting, you hold it and have a separate meeting. We've gotten into the habit, I think, of of maybe acting on s- some issues, trying to avoid having a separate finance meeting or public works meeting or safety and development meeting, acting on issues at recess that um should be acted on at separate meetings. And, you know, I think we have to go back to having more separate meetings where it's appropriate. Um, and I'm not saying you have to bring up everything at a at a at a separate meeting, but certainly important issues such as compensation and things, um budget, those types of things should be done at a separate meeting um where every member of the council can attend, a- and, um, you know, we can attend, I know, I know, Kevin, I I know if we would ask you and say, Kevin, hold this item up for the rest of us to to be in attendance, you would do that. Unfortunately, we don't always think of it, or we don't think it's gonna be controversial, um so, you know, I think we have to take a look at that. I am not in favor of of eliminating uh um the simultaneous meetings at recess. I think we, I think they're good, I think they speed up the process, however, you know, I've never seen anytime, even a constituent, if a constituent said, hey, I wanna go to both of these, the chairman would would, both chairman would act appropriately and say, okay, we'll let you know when this item is coming up on the agenda, we'll come and get you. Um, we've done that for older persons numerous times, we've done it for staff members, where we needed the building and zoning inspector in for license and for safety, you know, we've city attorney, same thing. So we've done that, and it's not a big deal, older person probes.
As council president, would you consider making a statement like that at our next meeting, letting constituents know that?
Sure.
Let them know that if there's a simultaneous thing, that all they have to do is speak to the committee chair, and that that, I mean, it, we have to be better communicators with our taxpayers, and that's one way to go about doing it.
Yeah, I've never heard that complaint before, that was the first time somebody brought it up.
Well, and I got it, and it is an email, so like I said, it might, if he's thinking it, there could be others.
So, you know, that, he, yeah, he did bring it up at the council floor.
In front for all of us, correct.
So, uh, uh, Alderman Vitale.
He wanted to be here today.
Isaac, you know, years ago when technology was really, I mean, it was weighed by the mailbox for the city agenda in the mailbox, but today is not the case anymore.
Right.
So, if I do get it by the courtesy and the service the clerk office been providing now for few years, then we get the agenda. I mean, uh, normally, I mean, uh, it's in my email by Thursday or Friday. So, if I get the agenda, before I know it, I look at it, and then if I have to, I I I do the old way too, I print it out, you know, most of the time I do. So, what I do, I look, whether it's administration and finance, public works, center development, advisory, and I look if there's any critical issue, and Tom, I called you before for something that came up in.
We've all done that, we've all called chairman from the other committees.
And we've all done that, so, so the service really is out there for any, any of us. We have any questions, whether it's public works or administration, finance, or anything that within development, something that occurs. If there's any on this agenda here, we'd be able to 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 raise questions on Monday or Friday during the day, you can still do that, you know, I mean, it's not the questions this city has been, or the the or the department has, they've been kinda high things on us, I mean, I never experienced that. I always had a good relationship in regard to the uh reports, the, you know, every department's been putting forward, you know, so, so if it's a problem today, I have no idea, you know, really, I mean, at this point, I mean, whatever it takes, you know, to accommodate the issue.
Alderman Vitale, you your your early statement was correct, because I think some of us were on the council years back before email, when we got an agenda mailed to you, and you couldn't act on items at recess because you didn't know anything about them, you had to wait until the committee meeting was further down the road before you got all the details.
That's right.
Now it's all at our fingertips, Alderman, personal probes.
I I wanna be really clear, because I think Alderman Vitale may have missed the point that I was making before, when I, when we talked about it. But when I, it's not about not being, having the time to ask the questions, I do that all the time.
Yes.
I stated that sometimes you don't know there's going to be an issue until the conversation occurs. I wouldn't have thought twice about it, when I read it on the agenda, it looked completely non-controversial. But then when the conversation occurs at the table, that's where other ideas come out and you think, and you're like, oh, but what about, so, with that particular item that I had, I had new information. I wanted that opportunity.
I'm not sure that that would've come out at the committee meeting anyway, cause it didn't come out, the, and nobody knew that those employees were upset about it until after it was acted on.
Correct, and that's why I'm saying, I, we had an opportunity though to go back and and maybe have that conversation.
Yep.
So, and and to that specific issue without getting too much into it, it was actually held at administration and finance in separate non-recess meetings multiple times, and a lot of those questions that were on that form were raised, cause we we got the uh, what do you call it, the fiscal note, uh to take care of it, so that's why at the time I didn't agree with the the uh motion to reconsider, but uh, you know, if if we just wanna make it a matter of a policy, you know, got a motion to re, as long as it's not being done to um be malicious, I, you know, fine, we'll do motions to reconsider in the future, I think that's the way to go then. In in this specific case, we did hold it multiple times in recess, outside of recess meetings, and I'm not saying.
I don't understand the word malicious.
Let me explain, well, I'm not saying you did anything malicious that day, I don't think you did.
Oh, I know I didn't.
Yeah, and I know you didn't. What I'm saying is, is that I don't want it to be something where it's a five-five vote, it's kinda close, it passes, and so someone brings it for motion to reconsider, just to keep holding something up.
Well, Alderman, me, I, you know, I hear, I hear where you're going, but I don't think you can put anything in a policy saying.
Exactly, I'm saying as a matter of operation, I wouldn't do that again, I guess is what I'm saying.
No. I voted to reconsider because older person probes explained that she wanted to reconsider simply to change her vote. And I will always give anybody an opportunity to change their vote on the council. Um, I may not agree with their vote, but I'll always give you an opportunity to change it, that's your prerogative. We all make mistakes, and I've seen it done in a council forum many times, where someone votes yes, and after the vote's all done, they say, oh, I wanna vote no, mayor, can I change my vote? It happens.
And for that reason, I would, yeah, no problem.
So, uh, and I mean, in this case, there was new information that the older person probes wasn't aware of. I certainly would afford the opportunity to vote against it. I wouldn't agree with her with her vote, but I would vote against, I would give her the opportunity to change her vote.
Yeah, if it was change her vote, I would've gone for it.
That's what it was.
That's what it was for.
And and I, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think also, and I don't think we have to establish policies, but it, but uh, you know, as the ten older persons, at some time um you are chairman or you will be chairman or whatever, I think we should determine on our agendas what we think might be um controversial and have that at your regular meeting. Now, again, sometimes it it, uh, public works is is, everybody's seen the public works agendas. There's seldom something that's controversial on there, but we have, and we we've either come in at six o'clock when we were changing policy about garbage carts or something that was controversial, and we'd come in at six o'clock and hold that meeting, but I think on the basis you know, the regular agenda, you're, you know, I'm not looking at any prob, would I still like to have it recorded? Yeah, and um, I I would not mind that at all. Uh, same thing with advisory, and you know, they're they're pretty simple, their appointments and things like that, but occasionally there's some hot issues that come through there, and then, you know, finance, you you do that, you're gonna be have to a little more careful with that one, because there's a lot of important things in safety and development, there can be, you know, important things that come through there too.
Absolutely.
But most of the time, like with safety and development, I've been in finance a little bit, we've had that meeting at, you know, at at a hall where everybody could attend two, three, four times down the row as as a um developments coming in, and we're all pretty aware of it, and we're all pretty, and then it comes to that committee meeting. It's still pretty much, everybody's talked on it, we all know where we're going with it, I don't think we need to have a special meeting just because it's you know, so, I think we all get the picture. I I I would, I would think.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, yeah. That, I mean, again, whatever you said, I think I kinda agree with that, but the uh, the fact it is that uh public works, I mean, it's been really for a while since Mike Lewis, I know you're the chairman, I'm the vice chairman, but I know when I you say you're not coming to that particular council meeting, so, Mike Lewis, he always send you a copy of the agenda. If you have any questions that you have on this paragraph here, call me, you know.
He is excellent.
I mean, I mean, if if you need to make a changes, you know, so so to me, it's 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 a good practice that he's doing, you know.
Older person.
What reconsideration vote are we all discussing? I don't know which one you're talking about. And the twelve department members that you said all sided up with you or gave new info, I don't know what you're talking about.
Do you remember the sheet of paper that you had at your desk one one night, I wanna say it was in June?
For the overtime for running a street project?
Yes.
I don't think we should discuss the issue, but we can.
No, you can't discuss the issue.
No, we won't discuss it, but I'm letting you know it was on that particular vote.
We can, the circumstances.
It was that particular vote, and I just asked for a motion for reconsideration. So that I could change my vote, which is what I stated out loud.
We sure are talking about it a lot though.
Well, we're not talking about the details of it all, we are saying this is in the future.
Right.
It's about procedural.
Right, yeah.
How things can go wrong.
And that's what the subject of this meeting was, it's a procedural.
I think the lesson here is just we need to be a little more considerate of each other, and I think we're all adults, and I think we can all do that.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd say we continue with our simultaneous meetings, and um, if there's a, like you, everyone here is saying, if there's something contentious, either hold it towards the end of your recess meeting or hold it for a a special meeting.
I would like to make sure that the record reflects that I do not believe that this is in the best interest of our taxpayers. We were each elected to sit, I should have the same opportunity to hear every single item that is to be discussed on every single agenda, if I so choose. That is my job as a representative, I have that responsibility to my taxpayers. And I just wanna make sure that the record reflects that I very much believe that we ought to hold these things not simultaneous.
Mr. Chair, as a as a matter of the taxpayer, I'd like to point out that it uh it does save on staff time, it does allow people to still review meetings afterwards, and something can always be back for reconsideration, so that would be my my stance on it.
The the only thing I would add to that, Mr. Chairman, would be that some announcement is made that um uh either by the council president or by the mayor, that a- any item, if there's somebody wants to, you know, attend in a special meeting, that that item be held for that person to to attend both meetings, yeah.
And I'll I'll make myself a note now.
Yeah, that they can attend both meetings and that, you know, go up to the chairman and that item will be held for you to attend both meetings.
In fact, um, maybe Monica, back there, maybe that's a something that can be added to our printed agenda. A statement to that.
I was thinking it should be out there re- on a regular basis.
On a regular basis, so that, I mean, to say it once, whoever hears it, hears it, put it on the agenda every week, just a statement of uh as a member of the audience, if you wish to uh attend uh committee meetings or speak at a committee meeting, please address the chairman. You can work out the wording, I mean, that's that's just.
Yeah.
Anything else to come before the committee on this item?
I ask one cent word.
One word.
How many times, since that meeting, almost thirty years, that we have done, when a citizen, somebody's asking in the committee meeting, the chair, if it could speak. Most of the time, if it happens, the chair would with courtesy, he always allow the citizen to speak based on his concerns, you know, so we never turn in many ways anybody out. And if somebody gets a real rouser, then, you know, that's different, you know, but we've never done that, really, I I think it's it's been a good practice, and we've been done that, really.
That's different.
But that's fine, I mean, it's gonna be on the agenda, that.
Yeah, it's on the agenda where someone wants to appear at both committees, they can do that, you know, we'll just, we'll just hold it.
That's that's actually a whole nother discussion for another day, legally, a person cannot speak at a committee meeting unless they call in advance and are published on the agenda.
I I totally.
Now, we've had practice that with, yes, yep, they really can't. But what we've done in the past is, I've always asked my committee members, is there any objection to having so-and-so speak on on, you know, on behalf of subject number, whatever, and we've allowed the.
Well, yes, as long as it's on the agenda, if it's an agenda item, uh uh, any committee I chaired, we've always let a reasonable amount of people, I mean, if you got thirty people or any, that's a different story.
Correct.
Then you pick out, you know, a representative to speak for you, or a couple of representatives, and and you give them five minutes each or something, but uh, yeah, we've always let people speak at the meetings and, you know, that's the way it should be, I know, you've you've done that in license and health, so everybody's done that in any committee I've ever served on, I've never seen the chairman talk to you, turn somebody away. Anything else to come before uh the committee of the whole on this matter?
Move for a German.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry.